Meeting of November ninth to order start time seven P M. First on our agenda, well, I'm sorry, before we move to the agenda, I'll move to Beth Kavagna.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify a couple of items that may have come up in conversations. One is anyone that is here this evening in regards to twelve Old Hollyville Road or six Cindy Lane. Those are eight thirty G applications before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are scheduled for a public hearing on December fourteenth. The Planning and Zoning Commission at this time cannot listen to any testimony in regards to those two items.
Okay, anything else, Beth?
Um, in regards to ninety seven Stony Hill Road, I have developed an email list and requested if people want any information regarding that to contact the office. And that will not be on your agenda or discussed in the near future. I believe from what the applicant, from what the property owner, potential property owner said, is that they will be back in January to have further discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good. All right, moving on, first on our agenda is a public hearing. Louisa, I'm going to need you to pronounce your last name.
You're muted, okay.
My last name is Yupangi.
Yupangi, thank you so much. Unit five and six recreational soccer, seven Francis Clark Circle. Kitty, should read the legal notice.
To appear in the Danbury News Times, November first and November fifth, twenty twenty one, legal notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the public hearing on November ninth, excuse me, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Using the Zoom platform, you hear the following. Louisa Yupangi, seven, seven Francis Clark Circle recreational use slash special permit. Text amendment, section seven, one, C, three, nonconforming parcel. These applications can be found on the town of Bethel website under announcements or contact the land use office at two oh three seven nine four eight five seven eight. Pat Rish, chairman.
Thank you. Beth, you're speaking to this application.
I'm going to do just a little bit of an intro on behalf of the applicant. And if you have any questions, you can speak to them directly. But if you noticed in the drive and review, anytime you're doing any kind of athletic activity indoors in the industrial park zone, it requires a special permit, which requires the public hearing in front of you as the commission. The property is owned by E W Batiste, Ed Batiste is the owner. The property is located across from Bethel Power. As you go into the park on the right hand side, where the former Little Cafe used to be in that building. That building also houses a volleyball league or volleyball training thing, something of that nature. Um, also, in regards to that, um, Louisa did submit a letter explaining how many people are there, what the numbers are pertaining to the leagues, when they occur, and things of that nature. Also included was a site plan showing the buildings as they are today. There are some minor renovations that will have to be made within the building, dealing with ADA bathrooms and things of that nature. But it, the application itself was pretty self explanatory. And I did ask them here this evening to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the business.
Thank you. All right, as this is a public hearing, we'll reach out to the public first. David, if you would be kind enough just to let the public.
The applicant, Pat.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize. Uh, Louisa, did you want to speak to this? You're, Louisa, you're on mute.
Uh, um, no, I just wanted to say hi to everybody and my name is Louisa Yupangi. And, uh, you know, I wanted to, to enjoy in Bethel. I want to rent the property, uh, but it's all your decisions.
Thank you. All right, again, as this is a public hearing, we'll move out to the public. David, if you'd be kind enough just to direct people on raising their hand to ask their question.
Sure, for anyone who has any comment they wish to offer for this application. They would use the raise hands ability in Zoom. You can raise your hands by clicking on the reactions icon in the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app. If that, if you are unable to do that, you can also find your name in the participants list and raise your hand that way. And we'll await anyone who has public comment, although I'm not seeing anyone at the moment, Pat.
Okay. All right, thank you, then we'll move to commission members. I have no questions, Kitty.
Uh, this was used as a, as some sort of sporting facility before this, and I can't see any problem with this application at all.
Thank you, Penny.
No, no questions.
Penny, was that Penny?
No question, thank you.
No questions.
Kenny?
Same, no questions.
Thank you, John. John?
I'm muted. You're muted, John.
Sorry, I had to press the mouse, guys, I'm sorry, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Rob Stoll?
I'm good, thank you very much, I'm looking forward to this.
Rob Wallace?
No questions at all.
All right, uh, Beth, is there any reason that we can't close this this evening?
No, you can close it, correct.
All right, if I have a consensus from commission members, well, do we agree to close this this evening by a show of hands? If everybody can be seen. Rob, I assume your hand is up?
My hands are up.
Thank you. All right, this, uh, application is closed. Moving on to Corbiere Estate of John B Shepherd. Text amendment, nonconforming parcels, section seven dot one dot C dot three, Six Peck Lane. Uh, and Beth, who's speaking to this application?
Attorney Peter Olson.
Okay, hi, Peter.
Hello, good evening, do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes.
You do, attorney Olson.
Excuse me, I think someone needs to read the legal.
Oh, I know, it was already read. It was already read, there were two on the first legal notice.
We read them both, I'm sorry, okay.
It's okay.
Good evening, my name is Peter Olson, I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of Marielle and Corbiere, who is the executrix of the estate of John B Shepherd. And I think I saw her on the video earlier, um, in, in my gallery, so she's here tonight in, in case there are any questions. The estate of John B Shepherd is the owner of a parcel of land in Bethel containing about nine point seven acres in total, spread among four lots. The property is known as Six Peck Lane and is located off of Chestnut Ridge Road. I've put the G I S up on my screen, um, where my cursor is, the arrow. This is the intersection of Greenwood Avenue and Chestnut Street. And if you follow Chestnut Street, it turns into Chestnut Ridge Road. And then you'll get to Gretchen Lane approximately here, where the Frog is, if you know the Frog. And then, as I zoom in, the parcel in question is highlighted in red. As you can see, the parcel has no frontage on any town road. There is, you know, the adjacent lots have frontage on Gretchen Lane. But this property is served only by a private right of way known as Peck Lane. And there's a house on the property and has been for many years. If you, if you proceed towards Chestnut Ridge Road, you can see there's a parcel that contains a portion of Peck Lane as part of this accessway here. It crosses one lot and then crosses a second lot where there's a house and then into the third one back here where, um, our house is located.
Peter?
Yes.
Um, I have no map on my screen.
So.
It shows, uh, more than a meeting discovered how you can evaluate ways.
Interesting.
Some kind of ad.
Yeah, I can see the map.
Yep, looks fine to me.
I can too.
Wow.
Well, Rob can do it, oh wow.
That's interesting.
It's a Zoom ad.
Yeah.
Well, let me stop sharing and resharing, okay? Now, that should have taken it away, so just have the video at this point.
Correct.
Let me go to share screen again. And now it's back to the G I S on my screen.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay. So just to repeat, the parcel we're talking about is highlighted in red. And Peck Lane, so called, is a private road that runs from Chestnut Ridge Road across a couple of parcels in, to serve where we have a house. So the parcel in question, parcels in question, have no frontage on a public road. In two thousand and six, the estate engaged Chris Leonard to discuss with staff the status of these lots. And as a result of that discussion, a letter was submitted, which I have included in materials for tonight's meeting, that outlined the legal deed history of the property, which is that there were four lots established in the deeds that end up with the estate of John Shepherd. These four lots were set forth on a map, which was recorded in the land records in two thousand and six and filed twenty five map fifty five, which I am hoping is being shown on the screen to everybody, if not, let me try that again. Okay, there we go. So as you can see, there were four lots set forth in the deeds. The house is this front lot here with a paved drive that's Peck Lane. And then there was an empty lot to the south and two empty lots to the rear. Four lots, this map was recorded in the land records in two thousand and six. Of these four lots, three of them are conforming as to area. The fourth lot, this one here, kind of short and narrow, is only point seven acres and the zone requires a full forty thousand square feet. So three of the lots are conforming as to land area, fourth is not. None of the four lots have any frontage on any public road. They're all, uh, rear, rear, uh, landlocked parcels of land. But they all existed prior to the adoption of zoning in Bethel in the nineteen fifties, and so they were simply nonconforming lots. The letter from Chris Leonard is in your material describing his analysis of those. My, uh, as I'll explain a bit, I don't agree entirely with the analysis because of the under, uh, nonconforming nature of this lot right here. So why are we here tonight? We're here because of section seven point three, point C, point three of your zoning regulations. Let me call it up on the screen. Okay, so here we are in seven point one, sorry, seven point one C three. And what this section says is, any nonconforming parcel lawfully existing at the time of adoption of these regulations and any amendments thereto may be continued as a nonconforming parcel, provided that such parcel has not once becoming nonconforming, been in the same ownership as an abutting parcel. I have to zoom out because my video of all of you was covering it. So what that is saying is if you have adjacent parcels of land that are in the same ownership, there's an issue that you aren't entitled to continue those land, those lots as nonconforming parcels. And the last sentence says what happens. If such parcel has been in the same ownership as an abutting parcel, such parcel shall, for zoning purposes, be considered to be merged to create a conforming lot or a more conforming parcel. So for us, we, as you saw on that map that set forth four parcels, they are all nonconforming at the time of the adoption of these regulations, although they were lawfully existing at that time. But because they're in the same ownership, the zoning regulations through this section consider them to be merged into a single parcel. So we've taken four parcels and turned them into one parcel. This is called automatic merger under the zoning regulations. And it occurs even if the, uh, property owner has the intent to keep the lot separate, such as by setting them forth on particular deeds, which is what happened here. Now, why am I asking you about this section? I have to rotate. The, the language in this section came into effect in two thousand and ten, which is when you did a comprehensive rewrite of your zoning regulations. Before two thousand and ten, the language that I'm showing you on the screen, and this is in the materials that I gave you, was in effect. And what it says is, nonconforming single lots in contiguous ownership, upon which no building has been erected, shall be required to conform to the standards for density and height and yard requirements and lot size for the applicable zone district specified here. Note the lack of the word lot frontage in that section. Lot frontage was not one of the things that the regulations before two thousand and ten considered to require this automatic merger. The change in two thousand and ten by broadening the categories of nonconformities brought lot frontage into the equation. Now, I didn't go back and figure out when this section was adopted, it's not really relevant. I can tell you that it was sometime between adoption of zoning and, and the year two thousand. These are, this provision is not in the original zoning regulations, for example, it came in at some point. So unfortunately, in two thousand and ten, when you adopted your, you know, omnibus zoning regulation rewrite, the effect of introducing lot frontage as something that requires automatic lot merger was to drastically reduce the value of this land. At the moment, before those regulations were adopted, there were three lots, really. One had the house on it. And then there were two vacant lots, these were building lots, they could be sold as building lots, even though they had no frontage on a public street. Um, and as a result, we had the full value of three lots. The moment those two thousand and ten regulations went into effect, that went away. And now what we have is one parcel of land that is one building lot that can't be divided. Um, that has essentially, you know, a one acre lot and nine acres of excess land, which on the open market, the value of that is drastically reduced. So what happened was the estate was put underwater on its obligations. There's a mortgage on the property, there are estate expenses that have been paid and have to be repaid. And it's not possible to go and pay off all of those expenses if the value of the land isn't supported by what it was coming into two thousand and ten. And that's all as a direct result of this amendment. So essentially, we're here tonight to throw ourselves on your mercy and say, maybe you didn't consider the effect of the two thousand and ten amendment and what it would have on properties throughout the town. And I can tell you that I am working with other property owners that have this exact problem. Now, some of those property owners have a much more minor problem because even though the land is considered merged, they can make a subdivision application to unmerge it. And yes, you're going to exact, uh, open space contributions and there's going to be application fees and we have to hire an engineer on those properties. But at the end of the day, the, the lots will be redivided back out with appropriate frontage. This one, we can't. And that goes back to the G I S I showed you, where none of the, no portion of the law has any frontage. So we can't just submit a subdivision application and say, you know, let us try again, we'll meet the current requirements. Um, I provided to you in your package a copy of the statutes, it's sideways at the moment. But, uh, if you can read through the statutes with authorized zoning regulations, at the end of, of section, subsection A, there are a number of provisions that discuss how you handle nonconforming uses. So such regulations shall not prohibit the continuance of any nonconforming use building or structure. Such regulations shall not provide for the termination of any nonconforming use solely as a result of nonuse, shall not terminate or deem abandoned a nonconforming use building or structure unless there's an intent to do so. That's in the statutes. The case law has held that an automatic merger provision such as you have in your regulations is perfectly fine. Um, and the reason that the case law has held that is they consider that a vacant lot that does not have a building on it is not a use building or structure. So these provisions are not directly applicable. That being said, the towns across the state handle this type of thing in different ways. There's no consistent way of handling it. Some towns have an automatic merger provision like you have. Other towns require a showing of intent for a merger to happen. Uh, my personal opinion is that regulations that require intent are better because you are not taking away the value of somebody's property by making these changes. Now, a couple of policy issues. If this type of provision had been in the first zoning regulations adopted in nineteen fifty five, I don't think anybody would have any complaint about it. What, what we have a problem with is them being sort of tucked into a two thousand and ten omnibus zoning rewrite. How is a property owner supposed to know that you're taking an action that will result in such a significant reduction in the value of the property when it's in that kind of a zoning adoption? Even if it had been done in two thousand and ten as a single standalone text amendment, maybe we wouldn't even know about it then. But there's a better chance. Second, and, and I think important, if you consider taking this step to revert the change, you are not really changing what can be done in this property beyond what was allowed in two thousand and ten. None of the lots can be divided because in order to do a division, you have to meet the current zoning regulations and they can't, they have no frontage. So it's not as if there will be a subdivision out on this land. All we're asking is that you allow the reestablishment of the three lots that were in place in two thousand and ten. The other thing that's important is the front, the requirement that we're talking about lot frontage is designed to provide for a couple of things. First is to make sure lots are of a minimum width, that we don't have strange, very, very, very narrow lots. And so you allow a certain amount of lot frontage for a lot in the zone. And you allow in some zones, rear lots to have twenty five feet of, of lot frontage. There are other requirements in your regulations, such as your minimum square, which take care of that problem. So we don't have to worry about lots being overly narrow. Second, it's to provide for access to the property, to make sure that somebody who has a, a home can get from that home to a public street. In this case, we have access over Peck Lane that's established in the land records. So we, we, we are not in a situation where we are creating lots that we then have to go and fight somebody to demand access over their property. The access already exists, Peck Lane, uh, so called, the right of way already goes, uh, through those properties and into the back where these lots already existing, uh, have the right to use Peck Lane. Just as an aside, Peck Lane was created in the deeds that, that conveyed these lots initially, um, as laid out in Chris Leonard's letter. So for all of those reasons, we, we think that our situation is somewhat unique in that we can't fix what you did, I say you, what the two thousand and ten commission did, by doing a subdivision. We're stuck and there's been a drastic reduction in the value of this property as a result. So as I said, we're here to lay out to you what happened. You have you take pity on us and revert the change. I did draft language, which is, uh, limits the reversion to just this situation. This is the new language that I'm proposing. That says, notwithstanding the provisions of this paragraph, a parcel lawfully existing at the time of adoption of these regulations, but which is a nonconforming parcel solely due to noncompliance than a lot frontage requirement of these regulations, shall not be subject to the merger requirements of this paragraph, may continue to exist as a separate parcel of land, despite common ownership, unless there's an intent to merge such parcels as a matter of legal title. So that's all I have for my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions and discuss any portion of this with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. All right, as this is a public hearing, we'll move out to the public. I believe everyone heard David's instructions, uh, should you want to make the comment or ask a question. David, are you seeing anyone?
I am not, Chairman Rist.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, Kitty.
Okay, Peter, clarify some things for me here, please.
I will do my best.
So before two thousand and ten, there were three lots back here or four?
There are four parcels of land.
But there, they can't be lots because they're not acreage.
Let me call up the map for you. So these are the four parcels of land. They all existed prior to nineteen fifty five, the adoption of zoning in Bethel.
Right, but now they have to be in that zone to be a lot, it has to be one acre.
One acre, forty thousand feet, so.
But that little number four doesn't really count.
Well, let me clarify that. When, when zoning regulations were adopted, they said, okay, this is a one acre zone. There was no provision at that time that required merger of lots that are in contiguous ownership. So in nineteen fifty five, we have four parcels of land that are nonconforming parcels that can continue as nonconforming parcels regardless of the size. That being said, one of them, this one here, was undersized at the time. It had the nonconformity because there was nothing in the regulations that said you couldn't do that. At some point before two thousand, you adopted a provision that said, hang on, any nonconforming lots that are nonconforming as to density, yards and size, and this is one more, that are owned by the same person and are contiguous, are considered merged. So whenever that provision was adopted, I don't know what it was, this provision, this lot here is the only one that would have fallen into it. And so, you know, it's probably considered merged in with this one here at that time.
So basically, we're looking at three lots.
Basically, we're looking at three lots.
And what you're, going back to the nonconformity, that would mean that you could come in and you could subdivide this property?
No, we can't subdivide.
That's right, but you can sell them as separate lots.
We can sell them as separate lots, correct. The reason we can't subdivide is a subdivision or a first cut must comply with the current regulations.
Right.
And there's no frontage, so, uh, you know, right there, we can't divide them.
And would these be considered, in essence, rear lots?
No, a rear lot is a technical term in your regulations. In certain zones, which the R forty is one, you can have a rear lot that has twenty five feet of frontage.
Right.
And it has twice the land acreage size. Now, I do want to make one other point, which is that in Bethel, frontage is required to be on a public street. Many other towns allow frontage to be on a private street. And if that were the case.
Then you have it.
You know, we'd, we'd be fine, basically, almost, almost fine.
Now, can you, off the, you know, you mentioned, can you tell me how, roughly, this text amendment, how many other properties would this involve?
I can't tell.
Could this touch, roughly?
Yeah, I, I can't tell you without looking at every parcel in Bethel.
No, because you, you mentioned it before, that you knew.
Yeah, I have another, I have another client that I've been working on. We were, we were gonna, going to come in with a subdivision. We, we've now possibly reached a deal to sell a big chunk of it without needing a subdivision, so.
All right, so, so basically, what you're asking for is us to leave it as nonconforming, so they can sell three lots.
What I'm asking you to do is to adjust the regulations essentially back to what it was in two thousand and ten, which will unmerge our lots and allow us to go sell this as three lots and realize the value that's needed to pay off the mortgage and cover the estate's expenses.
Thank you, I understand now, totally, go ahead.
Thank you, Kitty, uh, Penny.
I, I think that Kitty's last question actually answered the one that I was wondering about, about merging that little narrow property in with, with the lot that has the existing house.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's what happens.
Yeah.
Um, because all four lots lack frontage. But this lot, in addition, is undersized. And so that would remain, we're not asking you to change that rule.
Okay.
And maybe you should, but I'm not asking you tonight.
Okay. We'll, we'll wait till next year.
Yeah, exactly.
Or next minute.
So I would say this lot is considered. So I would say this lot is considered to be merged with the house lot.
Alright, another quick question. When the um, when the estate goes to sell the property. Do they have to sell the entire property with all three lots? Or are they permitted to sell individual lots?
Well, that's the whole reason we're here tonight. Is if if you deny this application. Then our only choice is to sell the whole property as one single nine point seven acre parcel. And what that means for value is essentially you get credit for one lot, one one acre lot. And then the rest of the land eight point seven acres is just excess land. And it has nowhere near the value of that one acre that's a building lot. We're allowed to sell it as three lots to, you know, three building lots, basically. Um, then we get that, you know, three times the base value plus the excess land value. And that's how we support the value that it was before two thousand ten. Each of these lots has deeded rights to use Peck Lane, so that's there.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, that that was my question, thanks.
Thanks Penny, Kenny.
Uh, I'm pretty familiar with this property, I've been on it many, many times, uh, family, friends went to school with them. Um, I don't have a problem with this, I see this as a reasonable solution to their problem and I'm okay with it.
Thank you Kenny, uh, John.
Um, I guess I'm still chewing on it, but but Peter, I I don't know if it's fair to say that in two thousand and ten when we wrote rewrote the regulations. The estate or the homeowner wouldn't have any idea that. A nonconforming lot would have been merged together, I mean, we had public hearing after public hearing. And I think even you were on the commission at that point and we were trying to make nonconforming lots more conforming. And this one was probably certainly on the radar because here's a lot with no road frontage, you know?
So I was not on the commission at the time, I was only on the commission until two thousand and seven. Otherwise, I would take full responsibility for helping draft it. Um, but I don't have any recollection of this of the of the um expansion of this provision being discussed. Now, it was eleven years ago and, you know, my brain cells are half dead. Could have, but I don't know how, uh, you know, an individual property owner. Is uh unless you have a very strong interest in zoning. Is expected to read an entire zoning rewrite and figure out that that's going to have a direct impact on their property. And and one of the reasons I know that is I know of at least three property owners that had no idea. Um, that this was that this was um in in place and. You know, I've talked with other lawyers about it and they had no idea this was in there as well, and it's eleven years later. Um, so I I I'm not saying that's the reason you should grant this, I'm just saying. Hey, something happened here that took away a significant portion of this property owner's value. And we'd like you to revisit that as to whether it's an appropriate policy.
Okay, but it but the spirit of us when we rewrote the regulation was to try to clean up. Problem lots like this, so you know, that's not a debate anymore because we we're here today. But that little parcel behind the house lot. What, you know, what is the status of that, has that been combined? Or the whole thing is combined and it has to be redrawn or we need to backtrack and and create the lot lines again?
So one of the problems with automatic merger provisions. As opposed to provisions that operate based on the intent of the property owner. Is that there's a diversion between legal title. You know, what's in the land records and what the zoning staff thinks the status of the property is. Um, this map was recorded in two thousand six. Uh, based on the regulations at that time, this lot should probably not have been set forth as a separate lot. Because the regulations at the time said continuous ownership of undersized lots means they're merged. And so this this line here probably should not have been there. Um. And then that's what I believe would be the zoning status of the lot today. That it is merged with this property here. Now, the assessors card, the assessors map, as I showed you, the GIS does it all as a single parcel. Um, and that I think is is why Chris Leonard's letter in two thousand six was generated is to say, hang on, the assessor's not right. That we actually have more than one parcel of land here. And that's why all this was done in two thousand six.
Okay, so your text amendment, right, the way your language, what does it do to that lot? It says you could go back to that and that and that is creating four lots here.
Well, it's not creating four lots, this map shows four lots. Because that's what they were as of nineteen forties, I mean, you can see the volumes and pages here, volume thirty-nine, volume sixty-two. Those are very, very old, you know, land records books. Um, if this text amendment is passed, we will file another map. That will show these two lots here as merged. Because that's what I think the regulations will establish at that point.
Okay, because that one's not going to fit a building square anyway.
Yeah, exactly, it's not, this bit here is nonconforming for many reasons.
Right.
The other three lots conform in every other respect except for lacking lot frontage on a public street.
Gotcha, I I just would feel really uncomfortable if 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 we adopted that new text amendment. And because you're going back past two thousand and ten, it created four and not three, that's where I'm going.
Definitely, I don't think that's the case.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, Pat, thank you.
Thank you, John, uh, Rob Stoll.
Peter, you mentioned in passing. In your presentation. About few. Potential future building and something that could not be built there, can you go? You remember that sentence? Can you go back to that again and expand a little bit?
So uh, obviously, I'm here on behalf of the estate of John Shepherd and we're talking about our property. And I don't want to talk about other properties at the moment, but. Um, if this amendment is approved, as as I've just said, we will end up with three lots. One already has a house on it. And and would be, maybe I should um call up my drawing tools, give me one second. I can't get to the box where I can type draw, but. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't draw, I'd like to draw, but um, the 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 window of, oh, there we go. Yeah, it's on the right. Yeah, I can do it now. Um. Okay. So this lot here. Is essentially the house lot. Um. That would be one lot. And then these other two lots. One. And two. Are vacant lots that can be sold for building purposes. Obviously, they have to go get septic approval, uh, wetlands approval, all the other things that would make something a building lot. Um, but those two lots can be sold as such and and would have the value as such, which is what we're trying to do. Because a subdivision. And or a first cut of land. Um, must comply with current zoning regulations. In order for it to be approved, those three parcels can't ever be divided again unless you change your regulations. To get rid of frontage as a requirement. Um, because they have no lot frontage, they're nonconforming. They're separate lots based on my amendment. But they can't comply with the current regulations to provide lot frontage for each of the components, so they can never be divided again. Now, that is not necessarily the case with other properties, as I said, the one that I'm working on. Can be redivided by a subdivision because it has enough frontage to make that work for a certain number of lots. Um, and and that's not the case here, which is why we're somewhat unique. Did that answer the question, Rob?
Uh, partially.
Okay, what did I miss?
I guess what I'm, I guess I'll just come out and say it, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that that uh. Back parcel, let's see, very small. For it, there was five, five and a half or five point six acres approximately.
Five point six acres, correct, cannot be divided.
Can't be divided, but a lot can go in there.
Well, the zoning regulation, those the zoning regulations allow one house on that lot.
Okay.
Right, because it's in our forty zone. Um, and it re, it only allows one house per parcel. So that's that's the only thing the zoning regulations would allow. I can't speak to whether there are other alternatives to increased development. But if there were, lot frontage would not stand in the way of use of a ten acre parcel and we wouldn't be here. With you, asking you to adjust it so we can, you know, so we can keep these three lots.
I got you. Thank you.
Please leave this picture up for, until you're finished with the others.
Uh, Linda. Linda, are you on mute? I'm sure she's here.
She is currently muted.
Linda, you're on mute. Alright, we'll come back to her, uh, Rob Wallace.
So um, I don't have the proposed text amendment in front of me, is it specific to this R forty zoning or is it more broadly written?
It it applies throughout the the town.
Could it be?
Um, sure, you can write it any way you want.
Okay.
Um, if you if if that's what you think would be needy, you can insert a clause that says in the R forty zone. Uh, I'm not sure that's a rational distinction, but. Maybe R forty and R eighty together might be rational.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you, Rob, um, Linda, can you hear us? Okay, I guess not, I I had no questions, there were great questions that were asked, yes Kitty.
Can I come back just a minute, Peter? So this, the way it's written right now, you have it down as four lots, yes?
No, it's three.
What, well, but the picture here shows four.
Yes, this this map was recorded in two thousand six. Chris Leonard in two thousand six made made a detailed argument that there were four lots.
Okay, now my question is.
I don't agree with Chris, I think there's three.
Okay, because you're take, you're saying. I don't want to give any ideas, but you're saying you're going to take this little lot and combine it with a lot in front of it.
I think that as a zoning matter, it's already merged. And so we would have to record a map. In order to sell the property that reflects the reality of the zoning rate, you know, the current zoning.
So that's definitely, it's not, for instance, again, sorry to be silly, not not to be silly, but. But of of the way I'm looking at this, this back lot is huge.
Yes.
Why why couldn't that little lot become a bigger lot and and then it's four?
Well, that's the argument Chris Leonard made in two thousand six.
Right, I read that.
He said, well, what we'll do is we'll take some land from the other lots and add it to that, we'll end up with four lots.
Because you have such a big lot in the back.
Right, yeah, so I think what happens with the requirement in the regulations in two thousand six. Um, is as soon as that was adopted at whatever point in nineteen seventies or eighties. Then the the lot was considered merged, this one. Only because lot frontage wasn't a merger criteria.
Okay, so then.
Here he was undersized, so uh, you know, I don't think Chris was right. What he was, what he was trying to say is. Um, we we should be able to adjust this to preserve that as not merged.
That's the feeling I got when I read it, but yeah, so now you don't see it that way, now this is this.
He was being an advocate.
One lot. So there are three lots that you're looking at, not four.
There are three lots.
Okay.
Uh, just to be clear, a-again, these are one of the problems with merger provisions. It's not clear which way the merger went. Like this, this lot could very well be considered merged into the back lot. And that becomes, you know, six point three acres and the the house lot stands on its own.
But the lot, but what basically what we're talking about is three lots.
Three lots.
Okay, alright, I'm good, thank you, thank you for your patience.
No problem, it's a difficult issue.
Alright, um.
Madam Chair, I have one, I I. Yeah, so Peter, you you have the map and and you've shrunk it down or you brought it together. What it, what, how many feet is a driveway to get to that rear lot?
Long.
And 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 you could give me two numbers, you could scare me with the first number from lot one to the back. And then you could do, you could do chestnut to back.
I don't know the answer because this map doesn't show.
A scale.
I I can go look at the GIS.
Alright, what, just give me some numbers here, I can't read them, from from the property line from the neighbor to get, I I assume the driveway is going to go behind that house and go up the property line to get to the back?
Yeah, so um, the first chunk of the driveway. Looks to me to be three seventy to four hundred feet. Yeah, four ten to get to get through that first lot. And then the second lot is three twenty. To get to our property boundary.
Okay, so so part, yeah, I I got it.
Proceed from there to get to the rear.
Right, so part of why in two thousand and ten we did. Try to clean up nonconforming lots is we don't let cul-de-sacs go on forever. And 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 I get cul-de-sacs have more than one home at the end of it, but we're 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 just pushing a problem down the road again. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, you know, if you go peck, it's probably. Seven hundred feet and then you're throwing another six hundred on there, so now we're at fourteen hundred feet. For the fire department to get to a rear lot or an ambulance to get to a rear lot. Because there's no road front there, and I I I totally buy in to before zoning was, you know, put together in nineteen fifty-five, but. We had a couple of shots to try to clean it up and now we're trying to go backwards again.
So a co- a couple of things, first is maybe the lot's not developable. As a result, maybe the fire department says, no, we won't approve that. Maybe they have to go find a different way into the property. So as you can see, there's very close to Gretchen Lane. Right, maybe they could acquire rights over this driveway to get in on the other side of of the street. Maybe that's possible. Um, none of that's possible without this change in the regulation. Alright, we we and 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 not for nothing, but this, you know, this goes up a big hill here. Um, so I I don't know where the development potential of this lot. Comes in and and certainly that affects the value of the lot. If you have to build a massive driveway that may not get approved, um, but. We have to start from the proposition that it's a legal lot that can be sold as a legal lot. Um, and second, I, you know, I understand that the goal of zoning is, one of the goals of zoning is to reduce nonconformities. And you refer to that as clean it up. That's, you know, a a laudable goal. But in this particular case, what we've run into is the destruction of two building lots of value. And unfortunately, that's put us underwater on on the obligations that have to be paid. And the sale of this property as a single parcel won't realize enough. To pay off the obligations of the estate, and that's why we're here. Because we don't really have a choice but to ask for your mercy, to say, yeah, we understand the goal of zoning is to do this, but in our case. You 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 essentially took took value from from our property by doing it. Um, so those are two competing, you know, theories of zoning law, one of which is to preserve value. And the other of which is to reduce nonconformities. Um, what I would, what I would argue is that. What is the value of a lot frontage requirement on a public street? When perhaps a lot frontage on a private road accomplishes just as much? And maybe that private road needs to be improved to serve these and that's something we do, so.
Okay, but but isn't it true, and maybe Beth, this is for you, once, once we do a text amendment to re. Qualify these as lots, the town then doesn't have a right to not give, not allow you to build. A qualified building lot, is that, isn't that right, Beth? I mean, once, once we give it a a a building lot, it's 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 a building lot, right? The fire department can't stop them then.
First of all, I don't consider. I don't consider this in the true sense of the word a building lot. To me, this is uh. These are lots that are available for sale and someone has to come in and show their build that they're able to be built upon.
Okay.
And and that's part of, you know, the department reviews, that's where the fire department would. And, and that's part of, you know, the department reviews, that's where the fire department would come in. You know, there's all the, the things, your grades, driveways can't exceed twelve percent. Um, there's other various aspects. Health, um, the septics and the wells and all that. So say, for example, this land was put up for sale tomorrow. Somebody come in and say, well, I'm going to buy this building lot and I'm going to say it's a raw piece of land. You have to do all the engineering and such associated with it to prove that you can put a structure on it.
Okay, great, okay, good.
Can I just speak in, in regards to, go ahead, Peter.
I was going to say, there is a stream that runs all the way across the property. So, uh, any attempt to develop the lot for a building is going to have to get a wetlands permit to cross that stream. You know, unless, unless they can find another way to go over Gretchen Lane, or go over to Gretchen Lane. The fire department's going to have to re-review the plans and say, we think this is safe and we can fight this fire. Or, you know, you're going to have to make the driveway bigger to make it all work. So I think Beth's answer was correct that, you know, a parcel of land does not become a building lot unless and until all, all permits are issued.
Hey, John.
It still has the value of a building lot.
In regards to that, let me just state what, a, a few other little things that I want to, um, bring up. Number one is that usually, um, this has come into play now because usually when, um, there is a requirement for maps to be filed in the town clerk's office that they have our sign off. The department's sign off and signature. This map does not have it. Uh, this was done after Chris Leonard's letter was submitted. I have a feeling that maybe a previous staff member didn't want to sign it. Um, the, because I, I was just very surprised to find this map on file in the land records. Secondly, um, what I would like to do is refer this to, um, Chuck Andrus, our land use counsel. Just to, uh, so I can have a discussion with him prior to you closing the public hearing. On what are the possible effects, uh, overall in town, not just in this particular instance?
Good point.
I think that's a great idea.
Done? There's a giant ravine behind this house. I mean, a really severe ravine, and it's going to be a high hurdle to overcome some of the difficulties that are there.
I agree, Ken, and, and, and dealing with this on an individual basis is one thing. But you have to understand, I have to look at how it affects the town overall.
Because it's a tax amendment to the regulations.
Correct, correct.
Exactly, that's what we were talking about, Sean.
Great.
And that's all I had to say.
Looking forward to hearing what Chuck has to say.
So we'll continue this public hearing until November twenty-third. Beth, do you think you'll hear from Chuck by then?
I certainly will.
Alright, this has been continued to November twenty-third.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, next on our agenda is our business meeting of ten twenty-six. I'd like to see Rob Wallace for Bob Legnard, uh, Rob Stoll for Rich Tibbetts. Has everyone had time to read the meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I believe Rob, Rob Wallace.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I have to abstain. Next on our agenda is work session.
Could I make a, a, a motion to add, um, sixty-four West Street to our agenda?
I, I'd second that motion.
Thank you, Kitty. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstention, motion carries. So next is our work session, upstream properties. Two LLC text amendment, section dot five-two, Stony Hill Plan Design Overlay District, forty-eight fifty Stony Hill Road. And I believe Beth, uh, a resolution was prepared for this.
Uh, you'll find a resolution, the Google Tribe, it was my understanding at the, David, could you bring it up for them? Um, at the last meeting, you requested, uh, we had made some amendments within that meeting itself and the applicant had recommended some amendments, and so we did put a motion together for you. Uh, is David here? Yeah, here he comes.
How's that?
No, that's sixty-four Wester Street.
Oh, okay.
We're looking for the, um,
entitled resolution S H.
That's the one.
She must. Mood.
There it is.
Mood.
Mood.
There it is.
Hold on a minute, let me make sure it's the right one.
That's, that's it.
Did you have a couple iterations done?
Yeah, I did. Um, David, could you go to the top, please?
You can control the screen, Beth.
Well, that's why you do it, because you're the controller now. Hold on a minute, let me just look at this. Because it should have a motion, it should have an effective date on it.
That's, there it is.
Yes, here we go, that's correct. Motion to approve with the effective date of November thirtieth.
Yeah, but you see your date is wrong?
Yeah, twenty twenty.
I never said I was perfect, John. I did that.
There's a catch?
Yes, I wanted to see if you still had it. And I'm going down to the reasons. Also, so you have the date, you have your motion approved with your effective date and then your reasons.
Do you want this read into the record?
Not the whole motion, no.
No, not all of it.
So, I would, so I'd like to make them, yep, so I'd like to make a motion to approve with the effective date of number thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, um, a text amendment. The title, Stony Hill Plan Design Overlay District, section five, uh, period twelve, Stony Hill, mixed-use overlay district, and I'm just going to go to the reasons. Nancy, you have it in the text. The commission finds that the proposed amendment is in comfor- conformance with the comprehensive plan of Town of Bethel. More importantly, it is in conformance with the affordability plan, providing opportunities to create more diversity in housing located within the P O C D plan of twenty twenty-one.
No, it was twenty twenty.
No, that's, twenty twenty, excuse me, right, yeah. Kitty, that's my-
Second.
Thank you, Kitty. Uh, any discussion? Hearing-
There has to be, there has to be a discussion.
Yeah, must be.
Has to be a discussion.
I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Uh, hold on a second, I gotta get back to my picture. Okay, um, on the affordable requirements.
Which number?
I, I know the way it was written and the way that the applicant has asked for, uh, use of the area median income. But I personally would submit that I would rather see that read state median income.
Thank you, Rob. That was me too.
Well, that's, that's a, so I, Pat, I think we should have discussion on that. And then I'd be going after a discussion to amend my motion. I don't have a problem with it that way. I, I felt like it was a good give and take, you know, during the whole open public hearing, and I could go either way on that one, Rob.
Oh, I, I, I agree with Rob. I was, I, I seconded it when, when it was waiting for discussion because I also agree that we should be going by the state median income.
Beth, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you know what that really-
I knew you were going to do this.
I just saw it somewhere.
Um, at, at, at this moment, no.
Do you think it's ten thousand? Do you think it's what?
Yeah, I-
No, i- it's, they're very close in numbers right now.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's hard to believe that we're close in numbers, but I did, I thought it was like within seven thousand dollars of income. So, Rob, to, you know, to that-
I'm trying to Google it right now to see if I can pull it up.
Can I just ask you a question along that discussion?
Sure.
Um, Rob, and I guess John, is the concern that the use of the word area is too vague?
No, 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 no. What, what it is for the affordable part of it, the applicant wanted to do it to the local numbers where Rob wants to do it to the state. And it would be, it would be a lower rent. It would, it would, it would wash out to a lower rent if you used the state numbers versus Bethel's numbers or local.
Or versus, what, we're, we're in Fairfield County, Penny, so our rents are much higher.
But no, 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 I, I understand all of that.
So by using the state-
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I know, I understand that. I'm just wondering if the concern, I'm, I'm just wondering that the word that was used in the document here is area compared to state or Bethel.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I mean, it's, it's the word area that is the concern. Got it. No, I understand, I understand all the rest of it.
No, but Penny, what they mean by the word area is in income in our area versus an average income for the state of Connecticut, where there's, where, where people up north or, or out east, you know, income levels are lower than Fairfield County.
No, I understand. I got it.
Okay.
So, Rob, are you still looking up something?
I, well, I found the, the, um, the state. Oh. If, if what I was looking at was actually a Connecticut, uh, government website for say, for instance, a family of three. In the state, the median income, hundred percent median income is one oh five thousand. I find that, I think that's a little high.
That's high. That was lower than what I saw.
Uh, and what I find for the Danbury Metro area, which I would assume the heart area is, is a hundred and fifteen for a family of three, a hundred and fifteen point eight. So, I mean, those numbers kind of jive with what John was saying.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Alright, well, that was, I mean, you know, that's food for thought. I don't know if any other commissioners have any input. But, I mean, based on what we talked about so far, I, I would like for my amendment to be voted on like it is. I don't think I want to amend it unless any other commissioners have some other information that would make me change it.
It's, it's still, um, Rob and, um,
Okay, so what you wanted, so you, um, John has made a motion. The motion's been seconded, correct?
Right.
So if someone wants to amend the motion-
No, 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 it's my motion. Nobody could amend my motion. I want, I want-
Ask you.
Yeah, go ahead.
They can ask you to amend your motion to change, um, it from the area median income to the state median income. You would respond to that.
Right.
Right.
I'm not exactly sure that's how Robert's Rules of Water works.
Oh, yes, it is. It's my motion. Yeah.
But I'm, I'm making a motion to amend your motion.
No, 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 the only, Rob, I, I, I respectfully disagree. The only way you could do it is you could force the chairwoman to have my motion voted on. It could go down and then somebody else could make a motion. That's why I said that I, that after we discussed it, I still think my motion should go the way it is. So then I would ask the chairwoman to, to push it, to close the discussion and to go to a vote.
Uh, John is right, we can't amend John's motion. John has to amend his own motion.
John can, John can accept a friendly suggestion.
Right, absolutely. And, and I, and I didn't. I thought it was a good conversation, but I think, you know, that the con- it was a great conversation, but I want to stay with my motion.
John, would you be kind enough to repeat your motion?
No, no, because I didn't read all that language, but, but Nancy has it.
Well, alright, what you want to change?
I don't want to change anything.
Okay.
So you want to stay with the town income?
Right.
Oh, okay.
I got it. David, do you want to go back? Alright, so Madam Chairman, you have a motion on the table to accept the tax amendment as proposed with an effective date of November eleventh, and your, um, member did state their reasons for such.
November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
So do you want to vote, I, I think, if there's no other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to take a vote on this. Um, I think we can see everyone's hand. If not, then I will have to ask. So by show of hands, are we accepting John's motion?
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think it's important for them to do a voice vote.
Voice vote. Okay, that's fine, we can do that.
So Nancy can do the call.
Yeah.
Do you want me, do you want me to call off the names?
Yes, please.
Okay, Kitty Grant?
I don't know.
What?
I, 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 I like-
Okay, excuse me. Okay, Pat Riss.
I have to abstain.
John Lennon.
Aye.
Kenny Parsons?
Yes.
Rob Stoll?
Nope.
Penny Kessler?
No.
Rob Wallace? Rob Wallace?
At this point, no.
Linda Curtis?
I don't know where she is.
I don't know either.
Her name is there and everything, but I don't-
She must be away from her, her computer.
I don't know. Okay, well, as it stands, we have four noes, one abstention, and two ayes, two yeses. So it appears that this motion-
Didn't pass.
Has failed.
Correct.
Can, can we further talk about it? I mean, I really think that it would be much better.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion. Hold on, got to go find it. I'm in the wrong place. Why does this keep happening to me? Where is, there it is. Okay, hold on. On my way there. I would like to make a, a motion that we approve with an effective date of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, the Stony Hill Plan Design Overlay District Proposed Zone Text Amendment, including the reasons, um, in the memo with the change that we got to go find it, availability, um, in H one, the last sentence, change area median income to state median income.
Okay.
Before I second that, I just want to make sure we address it in both H one
And the other one too.
And in H two, also at the very last.
Agreed. Thank you, thank you, Rob. Yeah, that's fine.
So it's H one and H two?
H two.
Correct.
Okay, uh, last sentence, area median income to state median income.
I have to change, Nancy.
Okay.
Uh, Nancy, do you want to take a vote?
No, you need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thanks, Rob.
Who was that? I'm sorry, Rob?
Rob Stoll.
Okay. Alright, Kitty Grant?
Yes.
Pat Riss?
I have to abstain.
Great. John Lennon?
Yes.
Ken Parsons?
Yes.
Rob Stoll?
Yes.
Penny Kessler?
Yes.
Rob Wallace?
Yes.
We'll try Linda Curtis.
I, I wasn't seated for this, so.
You wish to abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, motion passed.
Yeah.
Alright, Beth, is there anything else you need on this one?
No.
Okay, um, moving on, uh, Louisa, is it Yapangi? Unit five and six recreational soccer, seven Francis- seven Francis Clark Circle. Uh, Beth, because you were so familiar with the guidelines around this by chance, did you happen to prepare a resolution?
No, I was busy doing a lot of other things, but you can do it off the fly, you can do it off the fly, absolutely. Um, I would make a suggestion, and you could just agree with me, that you approve the, um, special permit for units five and six located at seven Francis J. Clark Circle to be used as an indoor soccer facility, as stated in a business memo presented by Louisa Yopangu, um, in regards to the business. And I'll clean it up.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to make that motion what Beth just said.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kitty. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
I oppose, abstention, motion carries. Next is, we've added 64 Worcester Street, and we have a motion that was prepared by Beth. Has everyone had an opportunity to read it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve that. The application for an 830G Affordable Housing Project, consisting of nine units located at 64 Worcester Street and the RR10 Zone Tax Assessor Map 21, Block 39, Lot 28. The commission carefully reviewed the application under Section 830G of the Connecticut State Statute, in particular those items pertaining to health, safety, and welfare of the potential residents and those residential areas and the surrounding property. The commission approves the application with the following conditions, 1 through 13. In making its decision, the commission recognizes the need for affordable housing in the Town of Bethel.
And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Uh, I'm sorry, who was first? Was that you, Penny?
Maybe.
Yes, it was Penny.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have to abstain. Thank you, motion passes. Moving on, planners report, Beth.
Uh, yeah.
Um, basically, what I, what I've done is, and it's just very preliminary, but you will find in the drive folder called Affordable Housing. Um, what we've done is, we've been working on a map. Um, and, and at your leisure, look at that. I've listed out some of the zoning regs, just as a reminder of what you've done over the last couple of years pertaining to affordable housing. And I'll be adding it to it, um, going forward, working with the new commission. And it's really just for starting point for new commission members. Um, and we'll probably talk about it more, maybe a little bit at our next meeting, which will be in person.
Yes.
Yay.
The end of the month. Um, I'm hoping that all the other commission members will, the new commission members will be able to attend. Um, I'd like to get your input, guys. I'm hoping, because we really don't have too much to close with, um, that we can hold it in Meeting Room D, our little room. And just spread ourselves out accordingly. Because the next meeting that we have will be a public hearing, it'll be held in the GP room, because it's to, um, affordable housing apps. And that will also be in person. So going forward, I mean, we are going to be in person.
Yeah.
I don't know how you all feel about that. If anyone is against doing that, please voice your opinion.
Will I be able to read the New York Times online?
Yes, if you bring your laptop, nobody will know.
Want to bet?
I won't tell.
I can set up the screen for you to, to watch it, too. We do have an Apple TV in there. But I mean, I'm hoping, you know, it's like a goodbye and a hello combined together the end of the month, and I'm just hoping that, um, we can all get together and say goodbye. And hello.
It's about time. Good to be with people.
I can be there.
All right.
Is that the 23rd, Beth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
We'll finish up the one hearing we have tonight, but we really don't have any other business coming in. Um, and if we do, we'll deal with it.
Exactly.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, any, uh, commission comments?
Congratulations to our new members.
Yes.
Yes, welcome. Uh, moving out, is there any public input? BJ?
No, no, just hello, everybody.
We'll see you downtown, BJ, next meeting.
All right, if there's no, nothing else to discuss, if I may have a motion to adjourn?
A vote.
Second.
All those in favor? A opposed, abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.